All good? Okay, folks that are on with us, hold on. Let me just do what I typically do here. All right, Joanne, just let me know when you're in. Okay. I'm going to start the recording.
Put Joanne in the waiting room.
She's fine.
Ready? Welcome back to the public portion of our meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn the executive session, please? And rejoin the public? I see it. I heard a motion from Michelle and I saw a second from Kelly. All in favor? That's everyone. Reprise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Once again, we are the only ones in the room. We have our exits and no one is smoking.
Okay, hold on one second, Christine.
Yep, I'm holding.
Okay.
Okay. So now a motion to open the public hearing, right?
Yes.
Could I have a motion to open the public hearing for the 2021-2022 Huntington School District budget? I see a motion from Xavier and a second from Linda. All in favor? The public hearing is opened.
Okay, bear with me for a second. Okay. So, we are in the final stages of preparation for next Tuesday, May 18th. Much of this has been discussed over the past couple of weeks in public. And this should provide a refresher, if not an overview, for those who have not been able to join us prior to now. So what you see here is a comparison between the 2021 and 21-22 budget, the actual budget for the current year, the board adopted budget for 21-22, and this is the budget that will be placed in front of the voters next Tuesday, May 18th. Couple of changes that have taken place since the last meeting, and that is primarily in the form of a change to the assessed valuation for the Huntington School District community. And this change, in fact, was positive. So what you see here are the same numbers in that 21-22 adopted budget column minus the assessed valuation. You'll notice that there has been an increase from 44, 856, 565. That is the current year's assessed value for the community. We received a package from the town assessor's office a couple of weeks back, between the last meeting and this meeting, which shows the increase from 44, 856, 565 to 44, 915, 291. And what that does, in effect, doesn't change the tax levy, doesn't change the total dollar amount that needs to be collected to support this budget, but what it will do is reduce the tax rate. And you see the bottom right-hand corner there? That .2% at the last meeting was .33%. Now, that 44, 915, 291 can change between now and September when the rate is adopted in its final form. It is possible that tax sursheraries and reassessments could bring that back down a little bit. But it is always a positive to talk about an increase in assessed value between the adoption of the budget and the budget hearing, because it does mean that there is a strong chance that the tax rate will be lower than we estimated. Also note that our tax levy within the adopted budget for 21-22 is 1.715 million plus below the established tax levy limit for the school district for the 21-22 school year.
Still amazing.
We had a lot of help, but this is a budget that not only supports all of the educational components that we wish to include, but it also does what it needs to do for our taxpayers. In sum, that's what we're looking at. Here's your recommended budget amount, your budget-to-budget increase from year to year. And the reason for the more significant budget-to-budget increase than tax levy or tax rate increase is the increase in revenues, primarily in the form of non-tax levy state aid. Adopted budget highlights. I don't want to read a lot of this, but it is important that the board, the community, those with us this evening, understand what we look at when we're crafting a budget. Obviously, we're looking at board goals. We're looking to further our progress toward achieving goals for the year, but also in alignment with mission, vision, core beliefs. Looking to build on what we have in place for our students and staff. Facilities, obviously, the Huntington School District is not new. In fact, it's been in place since 1657. The buildings are not quite that old, but there are things that need to be done. Our buildings are 50, 60 years of age and need to be upgraded on an annual basis. Health and safety needs, obviously, in the wake, hopefully, in the waning wake of the global pandemic. Couple of presentations back accounts for potential reduction in state aid, now accounts for future application of federal stimulus funding. We're in a much better fiscal place than we were a couple of months back. Network infrastructure and technological needs. We have a great tech staff here that has done incredible work in terms of putting us in a position to really support our students and staff technologically. We have bandwidth here that most districts can only dream about adding. And considers the taxpayer burden and long-term financial outlook, as mentioned earlier. We are looking, obviously, the education of our students and taking care of our educational family is first and foremost. But we are also cognizant of the fact that taxes on Long Island are not sustainable in their current form of increase, and we are looking to mitigate that as best we can in this school district. I've used slides like this before just to give the board and community a chance to reflect on some of the things that we have done and some of what we're looking to do with the 21-22 funding. Not going to read through this, but it's up on the screen for the board and community to look at, and you can gain a sense of some of the things that we are proud of here. There are multiple slides that list a couple of points of pride here. There are more where this came from. Curriculum electives. New standards are certainly in the queue. They're on the horizon in just about every discipline as we move to the next generation's standards and also implement new state standards in some of these special area disciplines. Library media, dual-language flex programs, extracurriculars, which we've been able to improve and increase even this year. Research in multiple areas. Robotics, National History Day, which is a point of pride here, has been for some time. Mock trial. Esports, brand-new to the district. Incredible in terms of how quickly we became a national power in that realm. The arts, another marquee program. Fine arts, performing arts. Drama musical. Photography, that has been featured quite often on the website recently. We have some very talented student and staff photographers onboard. Athletics. Unified basketball, which we've been somewhat slow to implement. Pandemic has gotten in the way, but it is still on the horizon. We're looking forward to that in 21-22. As the board knows, we're looking to increase, improve, expand our counseling and mental health services. Obviously, a need in just about every school district. Supports for students with disabilities and English language learners. Response to intervention programs. Intervention designed to help us close pandemic-related gaps and also make sure that we are placing our students and staff in a position where they feel like they want to be in the classroom and they want to be learning from the beginning of the day to the end of the day, from day one to day 180. Career and tech opportunities. College office, the high school, internships, community service programs. And obviously, the capital repairs and improvement is something we focus on quite often. There's a lot in this budget that we can be proud of. You've seen this before, but just to remind the board and community of what has been added since the state aid package increased significantly. Staff, in particular, it's over $1 million in staffing costs that we've been able to add and feel like we can sustain over time, because this is part of our foundation aid package. Elementary teachers, math teachers, ENL teachers, special educators, another librarian, and additional sections in numerous areas of need at both primarily Huntington High School and a couple of places at Finley Middle School. Student support, psychologist, a social worker. An increase in the caseload of the school counselor from half-time to full-time. The budget also includes the new transportation contract. And we were able to include another capital project, not as part of the capital proposition, but as part of the transfer to capital line in the general fund. And that'll be an additional solar project, which we are hopeful and confident that will save us additional monies down the road. We've got Southdown on the immediate horizon, and Flower Hill will be next. A lot of talk and discussion about the federal stimulus monies. These are not part of the current budget package, but they are below the line, will be treated as grant-in aid. We do have to apply for this money. As a matter of fact, just today, we received a memorandum from the State Education Department with the process through which we would be applying for the first Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act package. Those numbers have actually changed slightly. But we're still in the neighborhood of 2.5 million, just above that in that package. And the American Rescue Plan Act monies, that'll be the next application process a couple of months down the road, short of 5.7 million there for the Huntington School District. These are significant monies, some of which will be earmarked for specific items, i.e. the ARPA monies, 20% to address learning loss. But these are monies that we want to make sure that we are spending in alignment with the directions that have been given to us and in support of our students, program, staff, community.
I thought I heard the president say today that the first guidelines would be coming out soon.
Well, we did receive the first. The president's guidelines are not our state guidelines.
No, I meant for the federal.
For the states.
Right.
Okay. We're a couple of months away from getting anything from the state that'll help us there. We also will not be spending this money in one year. We do have the ability to spread it over time, which makes more sense in terms of making sure that our plans are carefully considered and the funding is used wisely.
Doing something that's sustainable for a few years that would actually make a greater impact.
Assessed valuation, talked about that a little bit before. Assessed value, it's not the market value of a home. Every home, every property in Huntington and any school district has an assessed value attached to it. It's basically something that the pertinent municipality, in our case, the town of Huntington, it uses this to calculate property taxes. It's considerably less than the market value of a home. Takes comparable home sales and inspections into consideration. We did not get a new average value in Huntington. It's going to be in that $3,400 area. It's fluctuated between that and 3,415 over the past couple of years, so that is a reasonable estimate. With the new assessed value, this was a table that was included onscreen at the last meeting. These numbers are lower, because it reflects that 44, 915, 44,915 and change number as opposed to the 44, 865 or 856 number. So right now, the assessed value, with an average assessed value of $3,400 Huntington home, the current budget would increase the school tax bill by $17.
That pizza I was talking about is getting smaller.
Yes, it is. But also, Bill constantly scrutinizes the numbers that we get back from the town assessor's office, and rightly so. But the fact is, the exemption impact report, the most considerable or voluminous exemption that added to the number of exemptions included in our report was for home improvements, which does make sense over the past 12 months, 14 months. So what's on the ballot next week? The budget and the capital proposition. Recall that the capital proposition is just voter approval for releasing money from capital reserve funds. That money can be used for no other purpose than for capital improvements. Here are the projects in that proposition. This work would be primarily done at the end of next school year. Another chunk of the high school roof, parking lot bleachers and flooring at Finley Middle School, and boiler replacement at Jefferson. If the budget were not approved by the voters next Tuesday, we could not increase the tax levy above the current 2021 tax levy, 0% increase. No exclusions can be taken into account, no capital tax levy or anything like that. If that happened, we would be required to remove 368, 438 from the equipment lines, and that would take care of that. We hope that does not happen, but that would be the impact. Presented in chart form. And there it is. So there will be in-person voting next Tuesday, 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Unfortunately, due to the pandemic circumstances, we will be displaying some work. We won't have the typical art show in place. We are moving the voting to the gymnasium just to space it out a little bit better and to remove it from the mainstream portion of the academic building components. So there's plenty of room. It's a big facility, there's plenty of room in there to do what we need to do.
So people will enter by the gym?
People will enter by the gym and not through the front entrance. They'll be directed accordingly. Mr. Palacios will be opening the polls and closing the polls. Thank you.
Set that alarm.
Gotcha.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay. And that's what we have.
Just trying to get my computer back. Okay, so.
So now your motion to close the budget hearing and re-enter.
I didn't know if we opened it up first or something. Okay, so could I have a motion to close the budget hearing and enter back into public? I see it from Bill and a second from Xavier. All in favor? That is everyone. I'll just wait for you to click. Do you want me to keep going?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay. "It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the minutes and transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School District Board of Education, dated April 19th, 2021." I have a motion. From Linda and a second from Michelle. All in favor? That's everyone. "And it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the minutes and transcription from the meeting of the Huntington Union Free School Board of Education, dated April 27th, 2021." Now, I have a motion. From Callie and a second from Bill. All in favor? That's everyone. We have some FYIs, the budget appropriation reports for general school lunch and special aid funds as of April 30th, and the budget transfers. And... Do we do anything with the extracurricular reports? Or is that supposed to be an FYI also?
That should be an FYI.
Okay. So also the extracurricular quarterly reports and the revenue status report as of April 30th. "It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the March 2021 treasurer's report." Do I have a motion? From Kelly and a second from Bill. All in favor? That's everyone. And the warrants. "It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve the attached warrants, which were certified for payment on April 28th, 2021." A motion? From Linda and a second from Xavier. All in favor? That's everyone. Okay. That brings us to board member communications. Michelle?
Oh. Well, I'm sure Jim's going to mention it, but I want to congratulate the esports team Rocket League on their playoff win, and they're going to national championships. And I have to say, that was really cool and exciting to watch live.
Okay.
Well, it was great.
It was intense.
We were all watching it together.
That was foreign language to me.
Well, that was easier than Overwatch.
No, it was a group of flying cars playing soccer, but very well. And honestly, this is the first year of a program. We have never been involved as a school district. Our kids have never played the games, obviously, but they have not been involved in a formal league like this. And if this was a normal year, these kids would have been... And this national competition in June that they've qualified for, well, I'm hearing it may be livestreamed on ESPN. And in a normal year, they would have been in Disney World doing the work.
So that's something to plan for for next year.
Absolutely.
Are their advisors big gamers, or they're just?
Honestly, I don't know. It's Mr. Corcoran and Ms. Balducci at the high school. I don't, I have to imagine they have some gaming skill. But, you know, it's more about getting the kids involved and interested, and they have some... And it was a lot of fun to watch, because you do have a chat on the side, and we had some huge Blue Devil fanatics watching this and really cheering the kids on. How they did this, I don't know, but I'm glad nonetheless. It was a lot of fun to watch.
All right.
Good luck to them on the championship.
Very much so.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Just worth saying a thank you again for the budget. Amazing job. And I think...
A little closer.
Just, I said worth saying thank you again on the incredible work with the budget. And I think one of the things also that maybe wasn't highlighted there was the expansion of universal pre-K, right? Which is also such a great thing happening.
Yeah, it didn't show the state aid today, but we are currently, and I'm glad you brought that up, Linda, because it's worth bringing up here. We'd received a little less than three times the funding that we would typically receive an average year, which is 335,000 and change. So what we are doing right now is putting together another RFP. Unfortunately, what happens when this money comes in in April, we're cut short with time to do what we need to do in the most efficient manner possible. We are getting this done. We are looking to convert our four-year-old program to full-day to the extent possible, and we will be pulling in some outside partners as well to help us make sure that no child is left behind here, for lack of a better way to put it. So our in-house program is going to expand. We'll have more full-day seats. And we'll also bring in, and again, this is pending RFP process, but bring in other partners to help us with our preschool education.
Yeah. I want to say that with regard to the budget that I think, besides the bottom line, of course, being exciting, the thing that's also exciting is that what you are able to add into the budget really directly affects two of our most important goals, which are, you know, affecting equity in education and also the social-emotional learning of our students. And those two things really can't be separated. So I just think it's exciting that all the things that you got to put in really directly impact those two goals. Anybody else have an announcement? Because then I'll just, I want to just say that, I want to just let everybody know that the Drama Club at the high school is working hard on their musical, The Addams Family, which will be presented in a recorded version on June 5th, somehow online, that I don't quite know how that works, but there will be a link. And it will be available for showing on June 5th. So make sure to put that on your calendar and tune in. To you?
All right, we'll be quick here. Most of what we've really needed to say has been said. We are coming to what I hope is the homestretch here of the global pandemic and the impact that it's had locally. We're still watching rates go in the right direction. We can only hope that this is going to continue to bring us back to what this budget will allow us to do in '21, '22. Just today, I believe, the FDA approved use of the Pfizer vaccine in children ages between ages 12 to 15. We are working on, actually, tonight, there is a contract on the agenda that will allow us to bring a student vaccination program into the high school for those who are interested. And that is obviously something that, you know, we'd like to get moving. We'd like to reduce risk locally as much as we possibly can. A lot of initiatives still in place at the state level in terms of support for remote or hybrid learning situations. My hope is that once September rolls around, that we can bring all of our children back safely and put the program in place with them in direct contact with their peers and their teachers as school was designed to be. A lot of questions have come up about what the fall is going to look like, and do understand that we are continuing to watch what happens over the next couple of weeks and that we'll be planning over the summer, that will involve our teaching staff, our administrators. We want everybody to be supported here. So when September gets here, we are ready to go with smiles on our faces and able to support our children to the greatest extent possible. Before that happens, there are still a lot of end-of-year events that are in the process of being planned or have been planned, and we're waiting on some potential relief from some of the restrictions that are out there. I know that the high school has communicated its information about the prom. Information about commencement will probably follow tonight's meeting. And I know the middle school and the elementary schools are planning their end-of-year events. I do want to mention, I know that Mrs. Rothel and Dr. Gonzalez and Mrs. Morrow put out their communications last night about their end-of-year events. And it is important, and I'll let the board know, that if restrictions are lessened as time goes on here, we're going to invite more people to these events. We're going to stay in alignment with state guidance, but one of the things I wanted them to put in their communications, and they wanted to put in their communications, was, look, we're going to do what we can do here, but understand that if we can open things up more, we are going to do that. We want there to be a family atmosphere at these events. Unfortunately, we're not quite there yet, and things may change in the next day, week, two weeks, whatever the case may be. We do expect there to be continued conversation. And my hope is that maybe more can be done with these events, and the communications will be ongoing. We have a lot of summer programs that will be in place over the summer. I know the summer arts program. Scope is partnering with us for a number of elementary enrichment programs. I've shared those links recently. I don't think I mentioned this in the last meeting, but the United States Department of Agriculture has extended its meal waiver program. So it looks like we can continue. Kathy did yeoman's work with Whitson's and our food service consultant to revamp our food service program a bit so that we can get the most out of it and feed the most people, not only in the school district, but in the community. And it looks like, I hope, is we will be able to continue that through at least the '21, '22 school year. I'll leave it at that for now.
Do you want, we talked a little bit about how sometimes news gets ahead of reality. Do you want to mention that or not? Like insofar as guidelines? Like how it comes out in the news, the changes in guidelines, but it hasn't actually happened?
When guidance comes, it comes in writing. So because the governor says something during a press conference, does not change the guidance. It's got to be adopted by the Department of Health, and it's got to be passed along through Suffolk County. We are in constant conversation with the Suffolk County Department of Health, and they've helped us significantly and considerably throughout this year to do more than we thought we'd be able to at certain times of year. But yes, you know, because you hear something that the governor said on Monday morning does not mean that it won't be two weeks until it's put into writing and able to be implemented at the state and local levels. So that's a good point.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Okay, that brings us to...
Sorry if I missed that.
What's that?
I said, sorry if I missed that.
No, that's okay. Brings us to our first public commentary. So our first public commentary is, at first, limited to our items for discussion or action. We ask that you raise your electronic hands. The commentary is for residents and employees of the district. Please raise your hand and identify yourself as you are unmuted. You have three minutes to speak, You have three minutes to speak, but I don't see any electronic hands being raised. There is another public commentary at the end of the meeting, so I won't drone on any further because we don't have any electronic hands. That brings us to our first item for discussion and action, which is the internal audit report.
Okay, Dr. Eckhart, I'm going to let you produce here.
Well, you want me to do the motion first?
You can do that.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education accept the 2019-2020 internal audit report prepared by Serini and Associates LLC. I have a motion please. From Linda and a second from Kelly. Now I'll give it to you, Dr. Eckhart.
Okay, so the internal audit report for 2021 was the extra classroom activity funds. And we have a member of the audit committee with us today. We had, the report was presented to us by Serini. They are internal auditors. And they met with the audit committee who has approved moving forward to the board with the internal audit report. So Bill, I don't know if you want to add anything?
Well, we got Kelly here. Kelly is kind of after this.
Yeah, she's after this.
Oh, he's become an expert.
That's you.
It's me, yeah. No, there was, again, findings, there were findings, but I think that is their job. They must have some findings. There were no major findings.
Bill, just a little closer to the mic, please. Thank you.
There were, there were some findings, no major findings. The, the recommendations for addressing them were all really pretty much accepted by management. And so all in all, I'd like to say that I, you know, as our reports go, I think this is a good one and I'm happy that we recommend accepting it as it is.
Yeah, as a result of the, the audit, there was quite a bit of training with our advisors. So they have, you know, better understanding of how these extra classroom funds are supposed to be managed. So we pretty much are in compliance now with almost every aspect of running these funds. And just a reminder that these are really for students to have, gain experience of managing money and understanding the business background so that, you know, the students, it's the students' money. They make decisions on how the money is spent and the advisor is there to advise. So, you know, so thank you.
Yeah, so and again, I should, I should have made that clear too, that what we audited this year, you know, it's not like we're auditing the way we're paying our teachers. It's kind of, it's, it's a side thing that I think is actually more enlightening as to, like you said, I learned an awful lot about the fact that we actually do that with the kids and we have the opportunity to instruct them and teach them in that area. Truthfully, we should probably have one of the students in here helping to accept the audit report so they, they get the full cycle of it all. Yeah, so thank you for that clarification, Kathy.
All right, well, thank you to the audit committee and to you Kathy and the auditors. And with that, we have a motion. All in favor? That's everyone.
And the full report is attached to this board docs items. I opened it up, but it's hard to see that quickly. So please don't hesitate if you're interested. This is an area that I know districts have, have struggled with, the extra classroom activity funds. And we've done a lot of work to get this to where it is now. So please don't hesitate to take a look at that report.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education vote affirmatively on the Nassau Suffolk School Board Association's 2021-2022 budget and slate of officers, executive committee members. Do I have a motion please? From Xavier and a second from Kelly. Any questions? We all know what this is? Okay. All in favor? That's everyone.
Thank you.
To Ms. McCoy.
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSE, CPSC submissions as delineated.
Okay, can I have a motion? From Bill and a second, from Linda. All in favor? Everyone, thank you. I'm back. To Mr. Polanski.
Thank you. I'm asking the board for approval of personnel items on schedules 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 8, 10, 13, 15, 16, 19, and 22.
Okay. A motion please. From Linda and a second, from Michelle. All in favor? That's everyone. You have announcements?
I have quite a few. Okay, so I'm going to go in order of schedule here. First and foremost, I'd like to thank the board this evening for appointing the next Huntington Union Free School District Director of Health, Physical Education, and Athletics, Mr. Jim Hoops. Congratulations, Jim. Looking forward to working with you and to some of the great things you're going to do in the years to come.
Congratulations.
Okay, I know we have some of these folks here with us tonight, so if, I'm looking at the board doc screen, but please understand that we're happy to have you here. So joining us in the world languages department, specifically Spanish, she's been with us for some time, has done a terrific job, but now in a probationary capacity, Ms. Clara Galaez-Acosta, welcome. Or should I say, welcome to a probationary position. Excited to have you here. Now, some of these folks will be in a probationary capacity come September. And actually, I saw Johanna before, she joined us earlier. I'm hoping she's back now. So starting with us in September at the elementary level is Johanna Martinez. Congratulations and welcome, Johanna. Change in assignment that should be mentioned here, we have a teacher at Jefferson who, when we access the dean positions at the intermediate level, did a great job for us this year at Jefferson. Jessica Rivera will be joining the dean team at Huntington High School. She'll be, replace Mr. Kalakka, who will be retiring after many years of dedicated service.
Did you just make that up? The dean team?
The dean team.
Like the dream team, but it's the dean team?
It's the dean team.
Okay, I like it.
The dean team of Mr. Ron Wilson, Mr. Rob Gilmore, and Mr. Paul Kalakka, soon to be Ms. Jessica Rivera. Okay. And lastly, also joining us at the elementary level come September is Ms. Julia Moore. If Julia's on tonight, welcome and we're looking forward to working with you. And let me just check here, I think I have another schedule that we need to...
Retirements maybe?
Yes, that's where I'm going. Three retirements that I'd like to acknowledge, people that have been with us for some time. First of all, a mainstay at Woodhall Intermediate School, Peggy Della Rosa. Peggy's been with us for a very long time. Woodhall, Peggy and Woodhall go hand in hand, at least in, in my mind. We'll miss her. She's done terrific work for kids and with staff over at Woodhall. Also, Liz Scanello is a mainstay in the Huntington School District. I had a chance to, to speak with her briefly today. She's at Jack Abrams this year, a lot of movement just based on the pandemic circumstances. But Liz has been a dedicated nurse in Huntington and has done terrific things here for kids and staff for so many years. We wish her well and she's, she's, she's around, so I know where to find her. She's not listening. And also Mark Smith, custodian, night custodian at Jefferson, is also retiring as of this agenda. So we wish Mark well, health and happiness in the future. I think that's it.
Okay. Dr. Eckhart?
Okay, it's upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items J through R on this evening's business agenda.
Do I have a motion? Motion from Xavier and a second from Linda. All in favor? That's everyone. Yep, anything you want to say about? I, I guess you.
Yeah, so HEPI can never stop to amaze the things that they do for us. In a pandemic year, they were able to put together the allocation of $30,837.67 in funds. So we'd really like to thank the Board of Directors of HEPI and to our teachers that have applied for these grants. Some of these grants are going to be giving us flexible seating, whole-brain learning, health through heart rate tech, figurative language development, video broadcasting tricaster, and a Proto Lab. So thank you very much. Very, very generous. Ms. Kimberly Steinberg is presenting a donation of a Baldwin 521 upright piano to the Huntington High School Music District. This donation has an approximate value of $500. Thank you very much.
Okay. Sorry. That brings us to our second public commentary. So same, same rules apply, except you can speak on any topic, except for personnel or students' names. But I again, oh, I see a hand. So identify yourself, Tom.
No, no, I have Amy Geramanti.
Oh, Amy. When, when you're unmuted and identify your affiliation with the district. Okay, Mrs. Ger...
Hi, I'm Amy Geramanti. How are you? I'm a parent in the district, but I'm also on the HEPI board. And I just wanted to say that we were so glad that our gala was actually able to happen last year. So we were able to come up with this, enough money to donate all these grant, you know, the money toward the grants. And the board voted on it unanimously. And everybody was very honored and able to be present at the district, especially during such a difficult year. We're excited about all the grants and the path forward with the new classes being added. And the district focused on staying current and sustainable in tech and teaching. So, thank you.
Thank you.
That was the last time a lot of us were all up together at a party.
Yeah, you know what? That's a great point.
I know.
It was late February, early March last year where that was probably the last time we were together. We'd like to thank you guys, Mrs. Geramanti and Alice Marie as well, and all of the HEPI folks for just never, never, always doing whatever you can to support our kids and staff and programs. And thank you so much for the generous donations. They will be put to good use. We're looking forward to, you know, obviously, the video program taking hold here and, you know, everything there is just phenomenal and we couldn't do it without you.
Very exciting.
There were a lot of exciting grants and there was a lot to choose from, so, but everybody was very unanimous in the decision on what was decided. So it was great.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Please share our thanks with the entire group.
Will do.
And of course, to the generous community that supports HEPI as well.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. Mr. Galvin?
Hi, how are you? I hope you can hear me okay?
You can.
Okay, wonderful. I'm actually, I'm reporting here for the Huntington Booster Club. And two quick points that we were hoping to make, like so many people here, we're all doing our best to try and help our community and our schools. Booster Club specifically, we work with the, with the sports teams. One of, just the many, you know, great things that Huntington has to offer, along with the arts program, the robotics club, the electronic gaming, Blue Devil electronic gaming team. But the Huntington Booster Club, clearly our activities have been a bit hindered as the sports have been hindered this year. And one of the things we were really hoping to offer this year was the opportunity of our summer sports camps. And I'm here to register, on behalf respectfully, register a bit of a dismay that we will be unable to participate in the summer sports programs. These are programs that run for a third of the price of what many other summer club activities run. It's supported by Huntington Coaches, Huntington Athletics, these are our kids. And all the money that we get in Booster Clubs funneled back into the district, into our sports programs. And I understand it was a crazy year and there was limited sports facilities, but you know, the fact that we got shut out, we, was, it was upsetting to the club members and we felt it important that, you know, we hope that for next year, perhaps we can have Booster Club prioritize when it comes to field allocation, you know, come next summer. But once again, that's, that's a respectful registering of where we were at. Because this is, this is what the whole club is about, is to, is to help the Huntington community, our, our students. And to that end, one other thing that we were helping to bring to our attention of the board, and we heard others talk about it a few board meetings back, Mr. Dwyer, Bill brought it up, was about the possibility of a second turf field in the, in Huntington. Clearly, this is nothing in the budget for this coming school year. But for the upcoming years, just, we, the Huntington Booster Club want to put our support behind that endeavor. The turf fields, as you know, they're, they, they not only are more helpful for our students, the student body, more usable throughout the year, can actually even generate revenue. These are things that we just wanted to advocate for in whatever way we could and have it something not put on the back burner at a point perhaps where very other, you know, other important issues get, get raised. But hoping that we can work towards this particular goal with the help of the Huntington Booster Club and to have it thought of as a bit of a priority, you know, when it comes to, dare I say, additional funds. There's never that additional funds, right? But the allocation of funds in the upcoming school year.
Coming up on three minutes there, Tom.
I'm sorry, what was that last? I didn't hear.
I said you're coming up on three minutes, so if you had anything else, just say.
No, I'm done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just a follow-up. We absolutely look forward to welcoming back the Booster Club into our summer capacity. Late start in terms of their applications for the program this year. I'm not sure exactly what happened, other than we ran out of field space and there's a lot of work being done this summer. And I know I received an email about a week, maybe, it was a Friday, maybe a Friday or two Fridays ago, indicating that they would not be able to run the camps this summer. And that was the last I heard of it since I tried to put together the person who runs the camp here and head our facilities office. So if there are issues with field use moving forward that I can help with, I've asked and I'll remind, please do not hesitate to reach out and contact me. And I will do what I can to assist that email. Kind of, I understand that the field use is limited and it was late in the game and part of that is pandemic. But I'll leave it as we will work to put things together moving forward that will attract our kids and help continue to build our programs.
I just want to, I mean, there are other field, there, we have multiple buildings.
Yeah, I don't, I was not, not a part of the conversation that took place after the initial that occurred.
Okay, I don't see any further hands raised, so that brings us to comments by board members. Anybody have any final comments, theories, conspiracies?
To the board members that are running, I wish you luck. You guys are valuable to our board and you deserve to come back.
Thank you, Xavier.
I'll say it again. To the, to the board members that are running, you guys are valuable to the team. I wish you luck. You both deserve to come back.
Thank you, Xavier. That's kind of very kind. Then I'll take a motion to adjourn. Our favorite motion of the day. And I have Kelly and Bill. All in favor? That's everyone. And thank you so much for coming out tonight, everybody. Please remember to vote on May 18th at the high school. Enter by the gym, there'll be plenty of signs. Opens at 6, closes at 9.
Thank you, folks.